Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting of the Select Board of Tuesday, April 1st, 2025 to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Bourne TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge at this time. Jamie. Use of flash photography during Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the conference line, 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom meeting ID is 897-1229-3538, and the password is BORN, all uppercase, B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. First item is a movement of signage to recognize our troops and public safety personnel. And salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for all.
Reading of the Select Board vision and mission statements. Would someone like to read the mission?
I will do the vision if I can get it on my sheet here. All right, vision. Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It's a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community, and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces excellent education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
And the mission?
I can read it. Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Thank you. Report out on the executive session. The Select Board approved and released two sets of minutes. Community shout-out and recognition. I have an item. The Bourne High School National Honor Society conducted a knock-down hunger drive and collected over 1,000 boxes of cereal and other items and donated it to the Bourne Food Pantry. So, congratulations and.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Quiet week. Is there anyone signed up for public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, I will skip the instructions. Next is the consent agenda. A, donation to council on aging for $30 from Mr. and Mrs. Janander. B, donations to the library totaling $190 from Anonymous Upper Cape Camera Club, Uptuxic Garden Club. C, Bourne High School Canalman Lacrosse use of Fire Station 3 in Sagamore for a car wash on May 10th, 2025, with the rain date of May 17th, 2025, which is a renewal. D, after-prom use of Fire Station 3 in Sagamore for a car wash to raise funds on April 19th, 2025, with the rain date of April 26th, it's a renewal. E, declare 50 vinyl chairs and a wooden picnic table, both beyond repair, surplus for disposition by the library. F, P&amp;MAs challenge use of town roads for their annual fundraising ride on August 2nd and August 3rd, 2025, is a renewal. G, one-day liquor license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages issued to Glen Holly Pan-Mas Challenge at the Mass Maritime Academy 101, Academy Drive, Bourne, on August 2nd, 2025, a renewal. H, authorize the town clerk to opt out of vote by mail for the May 20, yes, 2025 annual town election. And I appoint Timothy N. Derby, Sergeant, retired as a special police officer with a term ending June 30th, 2026.
I would like to take F out of order, out of the consent agenda and discuss it.
Okay. So, let's have a motion on A through E, G, H, and I.
Motion to approve consent agenda items as conditioned in the applications.
Second. Four items.
A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Melissa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions unanimous. And on E, on F, Mr. Meyer.
Yes, I would like to put a condition on item F, that we have no parking on the roads of Taylor's Point from August 2nd at 12:00 midnight to Sunday, August 3rd at 9:00 a.m. The reason for this is every year, we have no parking down there because Pan-Mas is just too much, and it's just for public safety. So, the roads are too small, too narrow. You can't get public safety vehicles down if they're parked on both sides of the street.
So, we have a motion to add that condition. Do you want to?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Second.
So, I'm just going to add the condition and then we'll vote.
Yep.
Separate. So, the motion to add the condition as described for no parking on Taylor's Point roads. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? So, that's 5-0-0. I want to make a motion to approve as, with all conditions.
Motion to approve with all conditions.
Second.
With all conditions by departments and as amended. How's that?
Yeah.
And is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Melissa. See further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Next is licensing and events. Breakthrough T-1D use of town roads for their Breakthrough T-1D ride on September 13th, 2025. So, anyone here from Breakthrough T-1D?
Hello, Chuck Howard, John Zoo.
Welcome, Chuck.
Thank you.
If you'd like to talk about your event.
Sure, I'll keep it relatively short. I have a long agenda, and thanks for allowing me to be on. Breakthrough T-1D used to be called General Diabetes Research Foundation, and the organization rebranded last year, so you may be familiar with their laws. We do do five rods around the country, which are a major fundraiser, and every couple of years, we rotate a venue out and have a new venue to create some excitement. So, we are moving our Burlington event to the Cape Cod area in September. We've been working with all municipalities and chambers. This event will bring 250 riders into the area, and unlike a lot of events where it's a lot of local folks, we'll be bringing people in from around the country. The event will be based out of the Seacrest and North Fowland, where we will be starting from and finishing at. And we worked with Maria and the police department there to identify a route we think works well, submitted the packet to you all. We're also working with Cor, Sandwich, Fowland, and Mashpee. And the route we're looking at leaves from Fowland through Seacrest, follows the route in your packet up to the Canal Road, goes into Sandwich, turns around and comes back, and then we do an extension of the route south through Fowland into Mashpee and back. So, the longest option is 100 miles. This is a major fundraiser for the organization to the tune of over $1 million. So, very important for the organization. And we like to say we really do things right with these rods, understanding that we're guests in your community, have a code of conduct for our riders. We work on a pretty stringent medical and safety plan, and again, work with all the other agencies in the area. So, I think we're moving forward. We did get the Corps of Engineer permit last week, and I submitted that to Maria. It just came after we submitted the packet. So, I could answer any questions, any concerns you all have, and definitely look forward to being there in September.
Any questions from the board?
It's a great event.
I have a question, actually. So, how do you stage these riders for, you know, leaving? And the reason I ask is that route, the route, you know, through like McGansett Road and Red Brook Harbor Road, I mean, those are pretty small roads. Do you stage people so that they don't, all 250 people don't leave all at the same time? How does that work?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I do want to note, we did limit this rod. Other rods we do, we have 800-plus people, and we're not Pan-Mas. We do, we send the riders out in waves over the course of five to 10 minutes. And what we will do is within that, we'll stage, you know, faster riders toward the front, or slower riders. What you'll find is we have very experienced cyclists who will be off, going quickly, and we'll have people who just found out their child has type 1 diabetes, and they pulled the bike out of the garage, and they will do 100 miles, they'll do 20. So, what we'll see is very quickly, a spread of riders, and the problem sort of take care of itself. So, you won't see big routes like you do in Pan-Mas. We do have a code of conduct I want to point out, and no matter what the local regulation is, we do require our riders to go single file unless they're passing. We are working this so that there will be very much two-way traffic. We're going to do a loop in Sandwich and come back to avoid that sort of two-way traffic on those narrow roads.
Great. Okay. So, is, any questions from the public? Ready for a motion?
Motion to approve Breakthrough T-1D use of town roads for their Breakthrough T-1D ride, such to all conditions by downtown of Harbors.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Good luck with your ride.
Thank you, and we'll see you all in September. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next is discussion and possible vote to appoint a member to the Shore and Harbor So, I believe we have two applicants. Let me get to the right place that is. The first application for, to be a member of the Shore and Harbor Committee is Jeffrey Melvin. Is Jeffrey here? And then, I don't see Jeffrey. We also have an application from William Jeffrey Wales, or Jeff. Is Jeff here? Welcome. Would you like to come to the podium and introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is William Jeffrey Wales. They call me Jeff. My family has been involved with the shore, the beautiful shores of Bourne for over 100 years. I personally have experienced the shores of Bourne for 69 years. I'm currently a co-master for the Tohoto Cove for the past seven years. I volunteer for the Bourne Conservation Trust. I'm on the Beach Committee for the Tohoto Association. And the reason I want to be on the committee is because I feel that it's very important that we commit to making our shores accessible, our waterways accessible, not only now and safe, not only now, but for my children and grandchildren and everyone else's. So, I think I could contribute quite a bit to the committee. I know Rich Libin, who has discussed this with him on several occasions, and I'd like your vote to be on the committee.
Sounds good. Any questions from the board?
Saw the talent bank form, and yeah.
Any questions of me?
Your experience speaks for itself.
Yes.
Make a motion that we appoint William Jeffrey Wales of three, Bayside Lane, Pecassett, to the Shore and Harbor Commission. Term to aspire.
This is a three-year term.
Three years.
June 2028.
At 6:30, 2028.
Second.
So, motion by Peter, second by Jean. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, it's several. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. Welcome to the Shore and Harbor Committee. You will, you will receive a notification to take to get sworn in at the town clerk's office, and once you're sworn in, you're an official member of the committee.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think they might be meeting soon. So, if you want to go over to Town Hall and pick up your swearing-in paper before the meeting, you can talk to Maria, but yeah, you should be able to do that, too, because I don't know how long the snail mail takes to get there. All right, then. Thank you. Next item is review and discuss all town meeting articles and motions approximately 7:20. We're a couple minutes early, but it's okay. They're not public hearings, so we can go a little bit early. First item is CPC Administrative Funds.
Barry's on the phone, I think.
Barry, are you on the phone?
I think that's him bottom right.
Yeah.
He has to unmute.
Star six.
Unmute, Barry.
Do, I think it's star six, Barry. Unmute.
I don't want to call him because I'll disconnect him. My luck.
Right, right.
If you call, you're going to.
He'll call, yeah, he'll, yes.
He's got a timer set for 7:40. Skip on and go to the other and come back. I don't know.
Well, he's the, and the next one is CPC to budget reserves, so. Trying to get, find where, the articles aren't numbered yet, so.
Twenty, page 26.
I'm happy to speak to both of these if the board would like.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, the first one, the Administrative Funds, is the standing article for the Community Preservation Committee, where they fund their administrative costs every year. And the recommendation is $75,000 again this year, which is the same as it has been the past couple of years.
Okay. And then, the, so that's actually on page 27, the bottom page 27, and then the chart for the, and this is anticipated revenues to go to the, to reserves. Is that what you're doing here?
That's correct. So, this is the revenue anticipated for next fiscal year from the CPA, and by putting it in reserve at the May town meeting, it makes it available to be used at the fall town meeting if needed. And I believe the percentages are 70% open space, and then 10% community housing, and 10% historic preservation. Erica, let me know if that's not correct. So, and then the, the other 10% goes into the undesigned balance.
You say 10% historic and 20% community housing, or vice versa?
Nope. 70% open space.
Right.
10% community housing.
Okay.
10% historic preservation, 10% undesigned.
Oh, all right. I missed that one. Thank you.
Okay. That's fine. So, next is presentation by the Integrated Solid Waste Management Building Committee. Isa, are you going to?
Good evening, everybody. Isa Mintz, Iceform Operations Manager and Chair of the Iceform Building Committee. Give you a little update of where we are. So, the first couple months of this year were really spent sorting out the site, you know, figuring how the transfer station and the residential area and our bulk handling areas, we're all going to work together in the next 15 years or 20 years or beyond. We've really gotten in sort of more into the building just in the last, you know, few weeks. That being said, we've got a floor plan layout and a site plan. However, we haven't really gotten into detailed design yet, and we've really just re-engaged the committee just in the last couple of weeks. So, not having gotten to the detailed design yet, we're not really ready to go to town meeting just yet. If we were to go to town meeting, we would be relying on our feasibility study estimate, which wouldn't be appropriate. We would kind of be putting the committee in a position to answer a lot of questions that maybe we don't have the answers to just yet. So, we are going to ask that we withdraw our article from May town meeting and move it to special town meeting in the fall. What that does for us a little bit, you know, in a technical term, it puts the squeeze on us a little bit in terms of preparation for Phase 7. And certainly, nobody feels that more than myself and my colleagues, Dan and Phil, but ultimately, you know, it's the right thing to do. It's the way the committee feels, and I think we will bring a better product to fall town meeting for sure. So, that being said, also here with me tonight is Greg Yanchenko from Helene Carl Architects, as well as Neil Joyce from Construction Monitoring Services, our OPM. And they'd like to just give you a little presentation on where we are, and then ultimately, maybe in two months after town meeting, we come back and give you, give you a better presentation with some, some visual renderings and things like that, because we haven't really pinned down the architecture on this just yet. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them right now.
I do have a question. So, is Phase 7, I'm, I've been trying to look at the phases, and I couldn't determine, are you going up first on the vertical of covering? Are you going up first? Is that what?
So, they're out of order. So, phase, yeah, and you know, you can't count from 7 to 9 apparently, but, so, Phase 7 and Phase 8, we're in Phase, we were in Phase 6. Phase 7 and Phase 8 were horizontal expansions that extended south through the 25-acre parcel. And then ultimately, you know, as time went by, people were like, well, let's do, you know, the vertical expansion was, was realized, and since we had already named Phase 7 and Phase 8, we just called the vertical expansion Phase 9. However, it makes sense to do the vertical expansion first, which buys us more time to move all our infrastructure. So, we're actually doing Phase 9 first, and then Phase 7, and then Phase 8. So, Phase 7 is our first horizontal expansion, which encompasses the area that is our office.
So, that does give you some time. I mean.
Yeah, it's time.
It gives you some time, but, yeah.
So, our window of site prep was about two years to move about 200,000 yards of material. That's now going to be shrunk to about a year and a half. So, still doable. We're not in dire straits yet, but it does squeeze us a little bit, so.
Okay, that's helpful. All right. Anybody else have any questions before they give a presentation?
Now, as your committee rep to that, to this building committee, I know this decision, this recommendation was not made without some thought, you know, the committees, I know, we, I guess we just got re-engaged after a few months of being, and not saying inactive, but we were just waiting for you to come back. But, the committee as a whole wants to do this right the first time, and they feel by taking this article off the, off the warrant and coming back in the special in the fall, will go a long way, so we can get more, so we can have more definitive answers. So, that way, when we go to town meeting, we're prepared.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, and that's, you know, and it's, it's a lot of money, you know, so we, you know, that's going to be spent on this. So, we want to make sure that we do it right the first time. And, but this committee has our staffs back, for sure. And, and the consultants have been great in working with us. So, I think, I think you'll have a well-oiled machine by giving us more time, as long as we don't affect the operations of the landfill, because that's most important. But, you say it's doable, we'll go with yours, and Mr. Barron, Mr. Gard's recommendation.
Sounds good. And you, you have, when we appropriated money for design, we appropriated it pretty much for the, I mean, it was like $1.9 million. So, there's plenty of money to go continue with the design and not get hung up on.
That should get us right, right to, right to bidding.
Right. So, that's great. Okay. Anything you'd like to just point out to us would be good.
Sure. Thank you, Isa. Good evening. My name is Greg Yanchenko. I'm with Helene Carl Architects, as I said and mentioned. With me tonight also is Mike Vienna, who's a senior associate with us that's working on this project. I'm going to let Isa put all the phases and schedule together. I'll just give you a quick overview on the parcel and everything. I'll just give you a quick overview on the parcel and everything. Most of the landfill is under the north. There's about a 12-acre parcel down at the bottom southern side of the site.
Can you, I think he wants you to talk into the microphone.
Sure. So, um, again, as I was saying, it's about a 12-acre parcel that has been cleared. We're working on that to develop the site right now. As you know, the, most of the landfills to the north of the site, this, what you're seeing in this site plan now, is a 12-acre parcel that's being developed, and the property line is pretty much right down there at the bottom. We've been working closely with operations to make sure that we get all the components to fit on the site. It's a pretty tight site, because it's not just for the new building, but it's for the recycling program that the residents partake in. It's the leaf and lawn debris, which is kind of the bulk area, as well as there's going to be a new transfer station, where you see the big trucks and, you know, all the dumpsters and everything that come into that. So, we've had to kind of work to get all these pieces together. That was part of the development, to make sure it operated correctly with the proper traffic flows. Also, to take advantage of the, what grades we have and make that work. And one of the challenges, too, is to try to make the least amount of impervious surfaces to the site. And again, but there are operational challenges that we have, so that is one of the considerations that have been developed over the last couple of months, working on the site. The next plan, which is kind of color-coded just to make it a little easier to see, again, is the development of the operational needs for the facility. And it's basically broken down into four areas. You'll see that the orange area is kind of the office area, that's primarily where the administrative spaces will be. That will also be facing the highway, that's the west side of the site. The yellow area that you're looking at is primarily for employees and staff. That would be like the locker rooms, break rooms, and the operational spaces that they need. The blue area is the vehicle storage. There's a series of vehicles that do need to be in, inside, like the VAC trucks and stuff, so that they don't freeze. So, that's for that area. And then finally, there is the green area, which is the vehicle repair area. And unlike most DPWs or something, this is a heavy-duty garage, because there will be like a 10-ton crane to help, you know, assist Isa and his staff in, you know, maintaining the equipment. So, we've kind of gotten to the point now that we've worked out most of the concept. Is, Isa had mentioned, now we will be moving into the phase of starting to do the schematic design, working more closely with the committee now to work on the aesthetics, as well as some of the other details and concerns. But at this point, I feel very comfortable that we're in a good place, as both a committee and as a design, because most of the key items have been worked out, and now we're just working on the details. So, I'll be happy to address any questions you may have.
Any questions aboard?
Throughout the summer, you'll see, you'll see a schedule, you know, of, you know, what we're doing from here and working out towards town meeting and after, you know, with schematic designs, programming needs, going to the, going to town meeting, going to the ballot, not ballot, no, no, we're paying, we're paying, we're paying off. We're paying out of retainers, we don't have to go to ballot, so it's town meeting only. And then, if approved, and what, what the calendar of events will be moving forward. And also, we're gonna, they're gonna start working on a proposed detailed budget, so we know line item to line item, how this money's gonna be allocated. You know, if it's mechanicals, if it's soft costs, high costs, contingency and that sort of thing. And so, for transparency, you'll see as things group along going into the fall and beyond, that we'll have more information for the public, so when we're ready to go to town meeting, you know, we have that information out there.
Sounds good. I have a, I have actually a budget tracking question. So, um, I, we, we're, we've been looking at building committees, and the building committee charge says that once the project is approved, the building committee is responsible for tracking the budget. Is, who, how is the budget being tracked at this point? Is it just done through our accounting department, like?
Well, I will turn some of that over to Isa, but I think Neil Joyce from CMS, who is the OPM, he's typically tasked with that, so Neil, I'll let you come and...
That would be great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We will be setting up a master project budget, incurring accounting for all anticipated project expenses throughout the process, starting from design and extending all the way through construction and closeout to completion of the project. We'll, we'll be asking and administering payment of all invoices related to the project through our office, and tracking those expenses as they are accumulated through the project. We'll be providing, normally, it's a monthly update with our report to the building committee, which I'm sure will be shared with town accounting and whatnot, as a, as a double check.
Great.
Any other questions?
Oh, thank you. That was a good explanation, thank you, just what I was looking for.
Madam Chair, do we need a motion to withdraw the article from the warrant, or are we just gonna do it administratively?
We can take it off. It's still draft.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for coming in. I appreciate, I appreciate your, you know, being careful about your process, and we'll look forward to seeing you in a few months. Thank you. All right, next is presentation by the South Side Fire Station Building Committee. Mr. Palmeroy, if you would like to introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Richard Palmeroy, from Palmeroy Associates. My firm is the owner's project manager for the South Side Fire Station project. So, we're here this evening to present to you the information that we have available to us at this time, and our preparations, and with the hopes that you'll support this at the spring town meeting. We don't have any presentation material, other than I think the handouts have been provided to you. I'm hopeful that everybody is realizing that this is, project has been in process for, I don't know, at least five years, looking for a suitable site for the South Side Fire Station. And with the ability to obtain 171 Clay Pond Road, just after the first of the year, we reactivated our group and re-energized and put together a plan for the develop, the development of that site, which is schematic at, at this stage. But we feel very confident in our ability to develop that site and to develop the building that's planned. The process was, in the last couple of months, the, we went back with the fire department and retooled the needs assessment. And I'm not sure if everyone has seen that or not, but the needs assessment looks at the department operations and the department needs, not only today, but for the future, and develops a, a square foot analysis for the building would fit the needs of the department. And from that needs assessment, we've developed a plan for the building. It's, at this time, 16,000 square feet, over two floors. And I think in your package, we have a copy of the site with, with some schematic floor plans. But the site is a very condensed, tight site. There are some, some variances that we will require in order to develop it. We've done extensive analysis of the soils, the water table. We've had meetings with the different town departments, and we feel it's a very suitable and buildable site. And it's the perfect location based upon the, the traffic, excuse me, the response time studies that were conducted several years ago. The building will, as I said, it'll be two floors. The first floor will include, you know, the watchroom, operational areas, a day room, some high-hazard areas, as well as the apparatus space. And then the second floor would accommodate the firefighters' sleeping quarters. And right now, we're planning a wellness center on that second floor, which would be sort of a gym. Where it's a very early schematic phase, but, you know, we've, what, what's been developed fits the needs of the department. Our team, as well as the project man, project architect's team, we specialize in fire stations. Between the two of us, over the last 10 or 15 years, we probably have 20 or more facilities that we've completed separately. And together, we've worked on a number of projects with the project architect as well. We have, as a matter of fact, two projects underway right now with them, three projects underway with them right now. So, we feel, feel very comfortable with, with presenting this at the annual town meeting. We, we have, we know the space that's required. We have a very good idea as to what the costs are gonna be for the construction. We have a very good idea of what the site development will entail and the costs associated with that. So, we're kind of here tonight to present, I presented you the building and the floor plans. We can walk through schedule and can, the budget, and can answer any questions that you might have. I'll just go through everything, and then we can go back if you'd like. The schedule itself, our goal is, if we can, if, when we gain approval in May, we would start right away with design, schematic design, and preparing the documents for bidding. We would be bidding this the first part of next year. And we were looking for, with favorable bids, the first part of next year, we'd be looking for a construction duration of about 14 months. And we'd be operating, opening up the facility after fit-out and everything else in the fall of '27. So, we've got a ways to go on this, but we feel very comfortable with our schedule and what our overall plan is. We've provided in your package a preliminary estimate that represents total cost, including soft costs, of $18,728,850. And that's based upon the construction costs, the cost of the consultants, furniture, fixtures and equipment, communications, networking, and the like. We've also included some substantial contingencies in that number. Between the hard costs and the soft costs, we have about 15% contingency. That is absolutely necessary at this point, and it's good business practice to, to, to incorporate those at this early stage. But we feel comfortable with those numbers. It's about it, I think. If you have any questions for us?
Are you comfortable that this will meet the long-term needs of the fire department? Because, you know, this department is a little, is short staff-wise, which means they would like to bring more staff on. If they bring more staff on, do we have the space avail, do we have the space needed to put those firefighters and, you know, between the three stations?
Yes, we do, and the chief is here, if, if, if you'd like to hear him speak to you, too. But what we've accommodated for right now is seven bunks for that facility, which is, which is adequate for, to incorporate the growth for the department. What we find is that the staff grows, but not necessarily the apparatus. In other words, you have certain apparatus that are dedicated to certain, at each station. But the plan is not to increase the apparatus as much, but it's the staffing level of it. We do have extra space in the apparatus space, if we were to add some small vehicles. But this has been designed to accommodate that growth. And if you look at the space needs assessment, you'll see that it's current and future, and identifies basically headcount.
Chief Blonsky, did you want to add anything to that, or if you're comfortable?
He pretty much took care of that. No, as Rick had said, a lot of the future growth would be for staffing, and, and he hit it on the head. Pretty much everything we have for apparatus is gonna stay, for the most part, the same, but there is a little bit of room to expand beyond that, so, yeah.
I was just thinking, for bedding, you know, for bedding purposes, you know, for, for the, for the two stations being combined, the one and just having enough sleeping quarters for, you know, for the, for the staff in that station to cover that side of the bridge. Because I know, I know Sation ones, I know Sagamore is more than big enough, and then Buzzes Bay is Buzzes Bay, so... Just want to make sure that we have our future needs, so we're not going back later on saying we need more room.
Absolutely.
Anybody else?
Yeah, thank you. No, that's a great presentation, and I would just encourage everyone to go online and look at the documents that are available and review them. And the next meeting is April 15th, at 3 o'clock, so please come if you have questions, and more the merrier.
All set.
I have a question, well, I have two questions, actually. So, one has to do with demolition, because there's, I read in the newspaper that there's no money in the project budget for demolition, and it says by the town. So, can we get an explanation of that?
So, I'm happy to answer that. At the special town meeting on January 6th, it was very clearly stated in that project that there was money in addition to the $1.5 million purchase price that was allocated for demolition and disposal. So, those funds are already in hand, and were funded January 6th. So, they are not being carried in the 18.8 cost.
So, my second question has to go with budget tracking? Because when you look at the detailed budget for the fire department, there is a Phase 1 feasibility column for the $1,750,000, and $1,736,081 is allocated towards feasibility out of that, which is, um... Some of it, I think, is double-counted, because some of the, like the $45,000 for the SA contract and the 66 for the PA original contract, I think those were paid out of original, the original $390,000 of allocation. So, I just want to make sure that, I mean, there's money in contingency, too, but can you talk about the budget tracking and how you're gonna start tracking the budget with the South Side Fire Station Committee?
Certainly. There's been a lot of twists and turns in that Phase 1 feasibility. There's been a lot of sites looked at, there's been a lot of deep due diligence conducted during that first phase. So, I'd be happy to go back and, and look and make sure that we have that separated correctly. As far as budget tracking goes, I think that the gentleman from CMS did a very good job of describing that. He's also an owner's project manager. And we, as owner's project managers, take this, that job, that portion of the job very seriously. What, from our, from my perspective, during design, is a different level of budget, budget tracking, though. So, we're gonna be doing check estimates all along the way, to make sure that our, our budget doesn't grow. As a matter of fact, our budget decreases. And as we're doing those check estimates, we want to make sure that that building is designed perfectly so that we get in our bid amount and put some money back into contingency. So, we'll be doing check estimates all the way through design. And then, once the bid is received, we set our budget, and we do monthly budget updates. We also perform funding forecasts, so that the community can understand what kind of expectations are, what the, the financial expectations are from them on a monthly basis. But the reconciliation at the, at the completion of each month is extremely important. So, we spend time with the town treasurer or accountant, and we'll do a reconciliation on a monthly basis of all invoices on the project, to track it that way. So, we, we have a tracking mechanism upfront to make sure that we're staying at least within budget, if not under budget, before we go out to bid. And then, once that budget is set, after the bid is received, then it's an accounting, accounting process on a monthly basis for all of the costs, and keeping an eye on any potential change orders.
Okay. So, there's actually like three, there's like three or four phases? Because we had an original $90,000 that was appropriated, then they appropriated another $300,000, so there was $390,000. When you came along, there was some of that still left. And then, so, I think making sure that things that are rightly to go against the $390,000 are against the $390,000, and things like demolition that's supposed to go against the $1,750,000 are put to that. So, I just got concerned, because it's only showing $14,000 left of the $1,750,000, $1,000,000. So I just got concerned, because it's only showing $14,000 left of the $1,750,000, $1,750,000.
We can certainly take a look at that.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great.
One thing to note about the demolition, it's a great move, and it's a great resource having a community, that community that can conduct that demolition themselves. The cost savings that you're going to recognize from that is immeasurable. If this demolition were to be completed during, as part of the general bid, you would have probably been, you know, spending twice as much, if not more, including markup. So it's, it's a great opportunity and great asset to complete that outside of the budget.
Right. Okay. Oops. Thank you. Any other questions?
Leona to this.
Leona, you have to, you have to come up to the microphone so people can hear.
I have a question. This gentleman here, will you mention that you're...
Leona?
You have to come to the microphone so people at home can hear.
Leona Bombachi from Pocasset. You mentioned your company was responsible for the design and construction of many fire stations. Can you tell me, were you involved with the Falmouth one on Sandwich Road?
No, I was not.
Well, that's a good thing.
Easy question. As a side note, we have a PowerPoint presentation that'll go live very shortly. We're just waiting, doing some final tweaks with the information that we presented here, as well as Q and A and some additional, you know, questions answering why is a station needed in that location. So that should go live this week, and that'll help with your public outreach.
Great. Sounds good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is presentation by the library trustees.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Fox Alfano. I am the chair of the library trustees. I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to present this evening. Because the select board and the library trustees have already held a joint meeting on March 20th regarding the request for $150,000 for OPM and design and planning for a potential new library, I'll keep my presentation brief. The $150,000 has already been approved by capital outlay and finance committees. In October of '23, the trustees requested an RFQ for a library feasibility study from our chief procurement officer, our town administrator. In April of '24, the RFQ for feasibility study was posted. In May, the grant application for the state was due, but we could not apply because the required conditions assessment is included in the feasibility study. For the 2024 state grant timeline, there were 27 letters of intent from libraries, including us. 22 libraries applied by May 31st, of which seven were funded, six were waitlisted, and nine were denied. In May through June, the feasibility study RFQ application and selection process began. In July through August, we contracted with Johnson and Roberts Associates for the feasibility study, and the library feasibility committee was appointed. The committee includes members of the planning board, disability commission, council on aging, friends at the library, a school-aged parent, and trustees. We met weekly or biweekly for several months, led by our, by Liz Hartsgrove, our assistant town administrator. In November, the feasibility study had a library building program defined and a library conditions assessment published. In December, we asked for the $150,000 to continue with the design and OPM phase. In January of this year, we had a public engagement meeting on January 27th, which was attended by over 60 residents, and we had a public survey that yielded over 400 responses. Clearly, all indicated a strong preference for keeping the library at 19 Sandwich Road. In May, we will be asking for $150,000 to continue with design and OPM. To finalize our contract with Johnson and Roberts Architects, we will be receiving a rough estimate for a new 28,000-square-foot building at 19 Sandwich Road, as well as a final report. We've had three library facility tours already, and will announce and hold more tours over the next few weeks. We will have a sign-up sheet at the library and let everyone know on social media. These will be done before town meeting, so folks can see in person the building issues we have encountered. We will continue to address concerns and ensure that the facade of the building is in keeping with the historic character of Old Bourne Village. The trustees invite the public to our next library feasibility study meeting, which is on Thursday, April 17th, at 5:30 at the library and on Zoom. We strongly encourage anyone with questions or concerns to come to the meeting, so we may answer your questions prior to the town meeting. We will look at all sources of funding in the future for our library, including state grants, other grants, and a foundation. We respectfully request a positive vote from the select board on April 8th and from the town on May 5th, so we may continue to engage our residents in creating a safe, functional, and flexible library that Bourne can be proud of for decades to come. Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions from the board?
Not at this time.
I have one, I have one question. So the article that is, being the draft article, is to see if the town will vote to appropriate for our transfer from available funds, otherwise the sum of money for the purpose of securing an owner's project manager and designer to develop schematic designs for a new library to be constructed at 19 Sandwich Road. And then the motion is to construct a new library to be constructed at 19 Sandwich Road. That's what the motion says. Has the board of trustees of the library voted to recommend the new library at 19 Sandwich Road?
Yes.
Okay.
And if it hasn't, we will at our next meeting.
I would just like, I mean, that's a kind of a technicality, but it's been, the...
It's been discussed over and over again, yes.
Right. But so the feasibility committee was working on it. They were going to make a recommendation to the library trustees. And then the library trustees were going to vote to recommend a new library, because that's what you're asking specifically for. And if the, if the warrant article and the motion are for a new library at 19 Sandwich Road, that is all that you can do with that money.
That's fine.
You're done with determining what your options are. You're done with your feasibility. You're asking the town to construct a new library at 19 Sandwich Road.
So the next feasibility study meeting is on the 17th of April, and our next library trustees meeting is on the 24th. So we'll make sure that's done.
Okay. The handbook will be printed and out, like, the 17th of, I think, of April, so...
The 18th, yes.
The 18th of April, so...
It'll happen.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item is a presentation by the petitioner for the nitrogen bylaw.
Bill Grant, Katamit. As we all know, in this room, I think, nitrogen loading in our local waters is a huge problem. The intent of this bylaw proposal was to address a small portion of the nitrogen coming into the waters, but it was a first step. The process for having a bylaw in Massachusetts, when there is a state law on the same subject, is a citizen's petition. The state will take the subject of the bylaw and review it to make sure it comports with the state law. There is a state law on nitrogen fertilizers in general. Actually, the state law is more for phosphorus than nitrogen. Most of the state is inland, so phosphorus is the main problem. With water on the coast, it's nitrogen. So our law, or the proposed bylaw, was focused on nitrogen. And my intent, or our intent, was to put this before the town meeting to have a nitrogen bylaw. But to do that, we first had to get a citizen's petition and a authorization from the state. At the meeting of the finance committee, the subject was enforcement. And Ms. Mrangelo fortunately was there and offered to get a legal opinion about how enforceable the bylaw would be if passed. The lawyers rendered an opinion on that subject, and in the course of that, said that they thought it was a better procedure to get authorization from the state to have a bylaw to begin with, and then have a bylaw passed. Nothing's easy in this world. I thought we could do, get all at once, get a bylaw, seek authorization from the state, and be done with it when the authorization comes through, which I hope and predict it will, the bylaw would go into effect. But the lawyer said, no. One step, first, have the state permit you to have a new bylaw, and then go before the town and get the bylaw passed. It adds time to this process. Would not be my preference to do it that way, because we've waited long enough. Most of the towns on the Cape already have fertilizer bylaws. We're starting from behind to begin with. But the lawyer recommended it, and I'm not one to fight the legal opinion of someone who probably knows municipal law better than I. So what the procedure will be is, at town meeting, we'll make a motion to divide the question. And I have discussed this with Ms. Kular, and she's been alerted to the procedure, and she will be up to speed on how to go about it. It's not a common motion, but it's been granted in other town meetings. It happens. So we will divide the state approval from the bylaw issue. And so the home rule petition will be the subject of the town meeting. The actual bylaw, which will, again, it'll be divided. So we'll have the home rule petition first. Can we change, should we seek state authorization? Then the actual bylaw, which, again, will be separated because of the motion to divide, I am going to move to indefinitely postpone that, so that, once state approval has been given, we can address the bylaw separately at a town meeting.
Now, we, whatever...
It probably will be a period of time, yes.
No, it's, now, are you going to have to go out while we have to find this answer? Are you going to have to come back with a separate private petition for your proposed bylaw? Or is this one that you submitted going to...
From what, from what I can gather, opinion from the, your municipal lawyer would be helpful, from what I gather, when you do the home rule petition, you state generally what the bylaw would pertain to, its terms generally. And then, at the town meeting, the specifics are voted upon.
All right.
I can ask a question, though. I don't see anything in this petition that says you're establishing a bylaw. There's, there's nothing in this, the only thing that refers to a bylaw is the severability, Section 8. So it, this, this, this says, "To see if the town will vote to authorize and direct the select board to petition the rate of general court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for special legislation, the text of which will be set below, 'to establish limitations on the use of nitrogen fertilizer with the goal of reducing nitrogen loading to marine bodies and to authorize the general court with the approval of the select board to make changes of form and text there, there too.'" So I don't even see that this is setting any bylaw at all. I think that the only thing you're doing with this, as far as I can see, is, is asking to petition the general court. It's not in the form of a bylaw. There's no, it's, there's no section, or it's not, it's not set out in the format of our bylaws.
Well, sure it is. Definitions, applicability...
But there's no section. Section 3.1.56 under general use and...
Article, Article 3.7, does it say that?
No, that's, that's referring to the wetlands and natural resources protection law. It's not changing that bylaw.
Right.
It would be establishing a bylaw.
The purpose, Section 1 purpose, to conserve natural resources and protect our environment. Are we modifying Section 3.7 to do that? It's not set out.
This would be a separate section.
Okay. So my reading, and maybe I'm totally off-base with this, but my reading is this article is really to authorize and direct the select board to pursue the general legislation. I don't think you have to divide any question. I don't think this is establishing any bylaw at all. That we would have a bylaw if we were subsequently to do so, that would have a severability clause in it that would say. So I'm just saying that, that I don't think you need to divide the question.
Uh-huh.
I think you can just, we need a motion. So if your motion, first of all, if the motion's, we move the town, so vote. Then we go to the legislation, and then after it gets, if it gets, the special legislation does get approved, and town council had some concerns that it might not, you know, we can deal with that at that time in terms of whether we want to create a bylaw. And I'm not in favor of bylaws done by citizen's petition, because they're too hard to change.
But town council said, as is presented, it wouldn't.
I feel comfortable, town council will come back before us at a future meeting and explain this, or maybe at the pre, when Amy Kular has her moderator's meeting, pre-town meeting. You know, everybody will be in the same room. We can ask those, ask those questions in, because I don't want, you know, this article to get drawn at town meeting, and then all of a sudden, it's read, and then all of a sudden, Amy rules them out of order, the moderator rules them out of order and stuff.
Right, so we should definitely talk about process.
I wouldn't like that either.
So, so, but, so, as far as a motion, generally, the private petitioner approves a motion. So we don't have a motion yet? And maybe we just say, motion we made at town meeting? And then discuss the motion at the pre-town meeting? And so it has to go in the way it's written. We can't change anything. It has to go into the warrant the way it's written, and then we can just have further discussion at the pre-town meeting to figure out the motion, and, and then to have town council, we'll be there to discuss process, and whether it needs to be divided, or whether it does, in fact, establish a bylaw.
Good. Sounds right. The intent is to do something about nitrogen loading. And I would prefer it not be a private petition myself, but nothing was happening. I know you all are going to be dealing with this issue because of the comprehensive wastewater plan and wrestling with that. So this is just one part of the overall issue presented to you folks.
No, but thank you for doing it since it was long overdue. Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your work. Next is review and discuss budget adjustments.
So in your packet, there's a list of budget adjustments that I would like to put before the board for your consideration. If you vote to incorporate these into the budget, then I will circulate updated sheets for the budget books. The first two lines are based on your previous discussion, so amending the town meeting budget for the 2.5% increase for the town moderator, adjusting the select board budget for the 2.5 increase, 2.5% increase for the select board members. The third line is a $3,000 adjustment to the recording secretary line, which was discussed by the select board as possibly additional funds necessary to support a building committee. The next line is a $4,500 adjustment for finance in the assess... The next line is a $4,500 adjustment for finance in the assessing division, which we have now moved our assessing software off of the town's local servers, and our consultant is hosting that in the cloud. And that cloud hosting service for that particular software package increases our annual cost by $4,500. The next line is an adjustment downwards to the Upper Cape Regional Technical High School in the amount of $43,713. And when we built the budget, we estimated some costs for the school, and when we received the school committee's actual voted budget for Upper Cape Tech, it was slightly under our estimate. The next line is the IT department, and this is an additional $10,000 to host our soft write financial package software in the cloud. So just like the costs for the assessing, this is the additional cost per year to have our consultant host that and get it off of our physical on-premises servers. The next line is restoring the salary for the part-time building inspector. So if you recall, when I first developed the budget, one of the priorities that I had for the budget was to have a, a full-time building inspector in this year's budget. And in order to do that, I was only comfortable doing that back in January by removing the part-time position. At this point, I would like to move forward with both the full-time and keeping the part-time. This is a department that I feel like we are really understaffed in, given the workload that we're all anticipating. So I would like your support to be able to move forward, retain the part-time, and move forward with the full, the new full-time. The next two lines are overtime lines, both for the Police Department and the Fire Department. As you know, we, we never really know what our overtime costs are going to come in at on any given year. However, we have been, we know we have not been keeping pace with the actual cost of overtime services over the past couple of years, so I would like to catch up those overtime lines somewhat in FY26. Likewise, the last adjustment on the expense side is for the insurance, specifically for the 111F insurance policy that the town carries. The deductibles and the premiums for that insurance have not been reviewed in many years. We've recently sat down and looked at that. So 111F is the state law that, that requires injury on duty benefits for public safety personnel. So we carry an insurance policy related to those injuries, and I would like to increase the budget for our 111F policy by $15,000 in FY26. Again, to catch up some ground we've lost over the past couple of years, just with the cost of medical care in general. And this is also one that we can't necessarily budget for exactly. We use some assumptions because we don't know how many injuries will happen on a given year. We don't know how long the injuries, we don't know the duration of the injuries, how long people will be out. But this is one where we are concerned that if we don't start catching it up, we could fall behind. And the, the fun, the funding source for these adjustments are the, still, still preliminary. We don't have the final state budget yet, but given the preliminary estimates that we have for the increases to state aid, the, the state aid on the cherry sheet, these adjustments can be covered with those funds from the preliminary governor's budget.
What, through the chair?
Yes.
What justification do we have to go from one full-time building inspector to full, to full-time and a part-time? I mean.
Well, we have part-time now.
Right now, we have a part-time.
Yeah, we have a part-time and a full-time, but we're adding additional full-time. So we'll, so if this passes pass, we'll have two full-time inspectors and a part-time inspector. And what are we getting for all that staffing dollars? I mean, is it enforcement? Is it?
We are so, we are really, we can't keep up with the permit load.
Has the ADU, you know, addition of ADUs, is that?
It's just the addition of everything. The amount of permits that, there's a timeframe. Permits have to be reviewed within a certain amount of time, and we are just, we're rushing through them because we, we do not have the ability to, to keep up with it.
Well, it's always with the new growth, which will be the need for it. So that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, the, there are a lot of permit applications.
Even without the new growth right now. They're behind.
Well, I mean, just look at the construction we're talking about. Our town construction, municipal building, construction projects. I mean, there's so many inspections that have to happen on all these things.
And just having.
Plans that have to be reviewed.
Yeah, all the things that.
Yeah.
St. Mary's experience.
And it is difficult to get, if you have, if you waiting on your permit, or you get your solar panels done, and you need that, you know?
No, but Amy Ray would know better than anyone in her line of work, you know, what she's waiting for. So I guess, I guess want to just get answers on the record so it justifies it, because people will be asking.
Oh, yeah, we're constantly hearing, we, yeah.
So you need, you want to make a motion to approve the budget adjustments as recommended?
Please.
So moved.
And then I will distribute new sources and uses and new budget pages to everyone.
Okay. So a motion by Peter, is there a second?
Second.
To the Jean.
Sure.
To approve as recommended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? It's unanimous. So moving right along.
So we can fill it.
But next is any other town meeting articles and motions. I have a couple notes. There aren't, there aren't article numbers yet, but there's a motion, page 26, there's a motion for the OPM for the solar array for the school department, and the motion has appropriate $50,000, and to meet the appropriation to transfer $150,000 from free cash.
I have corrected that since your packet.
And then there's on the board of assessors, like, I think there's a double article.
I'll double check that.
Yeah, I couldn't see anything that was different in the two. They looked exactly the same to me. Now, they might be different, but, and then the other question I have is still, the, the signed bylaw does not match the April, the March 14th Planning Board endorsed, endorsed bylaw. And there's a couple things, I picked out a couple things.
I'll have Jen look at that again. She sent me the, she sent me the planning board version, but I will have her double check.
Okay. I'll give you my notes on the two things.
Was it the same one that we received at our meeting?
No, it's different, the one, the one. What's in the handbook is not what we received at our meeting on the 18th. And there's brand-sponsored signs. There's only supposed to be two items under that F, and under temporary signs 2887, they crossed out, no other types of banners or flags are permitted for temporary signs. Those are two things that I happened to notice. I don't know about anything else.
I will, I will have the, I'll have Jennifer look at that.
Yeah. And the other, this is maybe end up being more part of the discussion when we talk about building committees, but we specifically, the motion for the Southside Fire Station specifically says that the funding will be under the direction of the Southside Fire Station Building Committee, but the, the Police Department roof and doesn't say under whose direction, and, I don't know, the library also doesn't say under whose direction, but maybe we don't need it for that.
What if Police Building Committee's been dissolved?
Right. I just want to have, I don't know, the question is, because that's a new thing to actually say in the Warren article, that Southside Fire Station is under the direction. I just want to make sure.
Why are we putting it in there?
Well, we, we can talk about that. Yeah, I don't know.
It's their purview, right? The Southside Fire Station Committee?
Yeah. So I don't want to get into a long discussion about that, because we talk about whether we're going to actually do a municipal building committee or not, but like, we can put it into that. I just want to mention it, but I didn't forget. Okay, next item is, anybody else have anything on annual town meeting articles and motions?
I have a comment regarding the assessing, the exact articles.
Yeah?
That's okay?
Yes.
So we do need both of the articles. One is to vote to increase the exemptions by 100%, and one is to increase the exemptions annually by the CPI. So they are.
Okay. I couldn't figure out how they were different. I mean, I tried to like compare them, so, thank you. That's a great explanation. Appreciate it.
Okay.
And that, in the, in the explanation, that could be clear, I guess. Next item, discussion of possible vote on the request of Leona Bombachi to place a public advisory question on the May 20th, 2025 annual election ballot regarding Holtec. Welcome.
Do I just get up there?
Yeah, well, yeah, you have to speak at the microphone so they can hear you.
I'm Leona Bombachi, and I'm a 40-year voting resident in the town of Warren from Pocasset. I am petition, I've gotten a petition with over 20 signatures for a non-binding public advisory question for the 25 Springtown ballot concerning what's going on at, at the Pilgrim Power Station by Holtec, the corporation there. I can read it. This petition, this question actually, has been presented to every town on the Cape, of which so far 10 of the towns have passed the fact to vote on it in their towns. It's sponsored heavily by the Cape Down Winters. Diane Turco is here, founding member of that organization and, and coordinator for a lot of the issues that have been going on at the Pilgrim Power Station by Holtec. So I don't know if you want me to read it, but basically what they're trying to do now, I mean, we had, we had a petition, I think it was, it was a binding question, a non-binding question, a few years ago, you may recall, about them wanting to dispose of the wastewater in Two Bay. Now they want to put it in the air, the gas from processing the toxic waste water.
Evaporation.
So I don't know if I have to read it. It's a very simple ballot question, non-binding, asking you to then write letters to the legislator and the governor and appropriate government officials that the town wants them to enforce the environmental laws that will prevent Holtec from keep doing this, releasing toxic radioactivity and radioactive materials into our environment, whether it's the water or the air or otherwise. So if you have any questions, you have, you have a copy of it?
Yeah, yes. And there was a lot of information.
A wealth of information.
Yes, yes.
Very thorough.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I mean, I just want to say a comment, yeah, I mean, I, I obviously, I've worked with Diane on, on this issue, as I've spoken on this from, in my other capacity as tribal chair. So this is an important issue, and I thank you for bringing it forward. I think if the other towns are working on it, this is something we certainly need to look at.
Yeah, I think it's important we get citizen vote approval, because it gives a little oomph behind the movement to the powers that be. All right, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
Passed, and we'll move on from there.
All right. So is there a motion to place the non-binding public advisory question for the 2025 Born Spring ballot?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jean, second by Peter. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? 500.
Thank you.
Question two. To place it as question two.
I just, I just wanted to add, thank you Diane for coming to our meeting as well, and thank you for bringing the petition forward. My mom being a lifelong activist, this is something that needs to be done to completion in the proper way. Contain it, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12 is all special town meeting. Articles and motions. I have, I have a question on one. We haven't set an amount yet for, to be asked for in relation to the CWMP, but I, I think, it could, it could be covered under, or take or act anything in relation thereto, but I think we should mention watershed permits and not just the CWMP. That if we're getting a consultant, that consultant should be discussing watershed permits and the CWMP. So I prefer it go in the Warren article, consulting services for watershed permits and the development of the comprehensive wastewater management plan. Then we could leave the motion the same and just figure out some money. We have any idea how much we're going to ask for now?
Well, I have no idea. I mean, what's the, we don't have the next step planned, like, we haven't had, I mean, we can't deliberate over it, we're just talking about the article, but I find it hard to figure out exactly, even a small chunk.
Well, our comprehensive wastewater management plan appropriation was $600,000.
Right.
So Marlene had suggested previously that we might consider sort of like ongoing amounts. I think we have to give ourselves some flexibility. We have to appropriate a sum of money now and then figure out.
I, I agree.
What necessarily we're going to do with that.
I agree, I agree. But it's hard to pull a number when, you know, what are the next steps? Is the focus going to be on, you know, watershed permits? Is the focus going to be on, you know, looking specifically to try to accomplish a project? I mean.
So Helen was going to get some responses, some response back to be able to get to us in terms of the responses to the comments. Do we, I'm just trying to figure out process. So either we don't put a motion in the handbook, or we wait, maybe have the discussion April 15th, and then have enough time to put the motion in the handbook?
Excuse me.
What do you suggest, Marlene, anything?
I think, I think you need to be clear on what your objective is before I can determine.
Money.
The budget.
So let's, let's start with the article and the wording of the article. Is there an inclination from the board to add consultants for, after consulting services for watershed permits and the development of the comprehensive wastewater management plan? To give us that flexibility. If we don't have, unless, unless the comprehensive wastewater management plan includes watershed permits, but I don't necessarily think that it does. And I think.
MIPA certificate did, certainly did.
I think we should put both in the article because then it's clear that if we get consulting services, we can get consulting services for either working on a watershed permit or for working on the comprehensive management plan or both. If it's not in the article, then I'm not sure that, that, I'm not sure what our flexibility is.
I don't know. Because it was discussed. Watershed permitting, I mean, it was outlined. If we would go that route in the, in the documentation in our plan. It was discussed. If we do watershed permit, then it gave a schedule. If we don't, it also gave a schedule.
That's different than doing work applying for a watershed permit.
The Secretary's MIPA certificate, the certificate itself requires that watershed permit be evaluated as a draft EIR.
Therefore, I think we should put it in the article. Because then it gives us, if it's, if it's in the article, we can spend the money on it. If it's not in the article, then how do we get the money to spend it? The amount of money is a separate thing and we probably are not going to be able to determine the amount of money we want until, till meeting. But at least we have flexibility in the article.
It doesn't hurt to have that flexibility and just put it in.
Is there a motion?
Whatever you said.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say, I was going to say, what's the motion?
What motion to add?
To add, add, after consulting services for.
The development of.
For.
So wastewater.
For watershed permits and for the development of a comprehensive watershed permit.
Second.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this, is this going to be understood by town meeting that you are moving forward?
That was my question. Are we now saying we are going forward with the watershed permits? I think the language has to be a little clearer as to the possible develop or development.
Evaluation of watershed permits? Evaluation of watershed permits? Evaluation.
Words are important.
For the evaluation of watershed permits and for the development of the comprehensive wastewater management plan. Is that good?
Yeah. And then refining us to that process.
Change your motion? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that's good. I like that.
Yes, revise it.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
That's good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? We can decide on the motion later in another meeting when we talk about our recommendations. If we don't, if we don't have a motion, it's, I don't generally like to recommend approval on an article without a motion. But we're going to talk about that next week, so we'll just leave it at that. Does anybody else have anything else on a special town meeting? Warren? Okay.
It definitely over. It was said 8:10, but we're at 8:30, so.
Yeah.
The estimates went up.
Yeah, it's, yeah, nice try, MJ. Review and discuss five-year capital plan. We're a little bit behind on that. We don't have a lot of time to discuss this.
I was going to say, can we table this for another?
We can table it. We can table it for another meeting, but I do think it's something that we have to really spend some time talking about because our five-year plan is, got a lot on it, not just money-wise, but in terms of how we're going to execute it all and how we're going to establish priorities for all the funding. So I think it's something that we are going to have to talk about. So we'll table that for another time.
Thank you.
Discussion debt authorization assumptions and scenarios for future debt schedules.
So this is something I wanted to share with the select board. It's really for your information. The Finance Committee has asked for this and I wanted to share it with you also. The sheet in your packet is specifically for general fund, non-excluded debt. We will also be preparing enterprise fund debt for the Finance Committee and general fund excluded debt for the Finance Committee. And I will continue to share these sheets with the select board as we develop them. But this is just showing if certain assumptions are made, how things can line out. So obviously if interest rates change or if the schedule changes and something doesn't hit the schedule until 28 instead of 27, things will be adjusted. But this is showing that if the authorizations that were passed at the fall town meeting for the fire station three roof and the fire engine, and if the authorizations pass at the May town meeting, what we're looking at. And I know we've been over many times, the financial policies have a target for us to have a percentage of the general fund operating budget available for debt. So we don't lose that investment capacity. And I know I've told you many times that we're under those targets and we're losing that and the operating costs continue to, the, the daily services are continuing to take that money. So this, at the bottom shows kind of, with these authorizations, we're slightly going back up, but not, you know, we're not at our floor yet. So the floor is 3% per policy. Even if everything does pass at the, at the numbers we're asking for, then we're, we're not even at two yet, 2%. So I just want you to be aware of this. I don't need to belabor it tonight, but it's something that I want you to have and we can talk about when, when you're ready.
Thank you. Next is discussion regarding standing municipal building committee. So, you know, we've had off and on discussion about whether or not we want to do it, don't want to do it. You know, do we want, with the projects, with the projects that we are currently working on, we have an ISWAM building committee, we have a Southside Fire Station Building Committee. There is a police roof, station roof that will need a building committee.
Yes, that's, that will be designer selection.
And then if the, if the article for the library for the OPM designer, does that go to a new committee now or?
That will need a building committee for designer selection.
So. Just, what are we going to do? Are we just going to have four different building committees? Are we going to try to do one municipal building committee that has, you know, members from the group? What is the?
I think, I think this is a, it's a huge shift in how we do things, right? This is a big shift. I'm, I'm concerned about, I don't know that the way, I, I just don't know how effective this committee's going to be. Like, on a volunteer basis, I have concerns about charter compliance. I have concerns about authority. I have concerns about kind of losing a little bit of control through the town administrator on these projects. I, I don't, I would like to, I'd like, if, if this is the direction the committee wants to go and if, I think it's something that we need to, I think it's more of like a goal-setting discussion. Or, you know, is it going to be a policy? Is it going to be a bylaw? There's a lot. It's, there's a lot with this. And I appreciate, you know, your research, MJ. And, and through that, like, this is a huge shift on how we do things. So.
I think, so when I look practically, and, and I'm, I'm starting to really get concerned when I, this is part of the discussion of the capital plan. When I start looking at playgrounds, skate parks, Chester Park, you know, these are all projects. They're not building committee projects, but they're projects that have to be managed. And then you have the ISO project, then you have the, the Southside Fire Station, and you've got the Police Department roof. And you've got, I mean, if, if you have four different building committees, you know, like, once a week, like, like every week, there's a new building committee meeting. If they're meeting once a month. I mean, that's a lot of work and it's, I'm, I'm worried. So.
I can understand, I can see, I can see the need for having a standing building committee. I think it's a good idea because we can't find multiple volunteers for everything, but we do have to balance out. We have to look at the charter. We have to look at the purviews of the committees and we have to look at the, the workload. If there is a standing building committee and they do have all these projects coming aboard, what does that workload look like? And how can they support themselves through all these different things? So it's a change. I think we can handle some positive changes, but, but yeah, we need to look at charter and review.
Yeah, I think it's a big, big conversation. Yeah.
There's, I, I really like, I like the draft. There's some languages, you know, I would tweak here and there, of course. But, and that's something that would be worked out, but.
I also found that going through that, there were things in there that I might want to consider putting into the charter building committees. It gave me more of a sense of like, what should a building committee be doing? And, you know, we have, I feel like we kind of like, what's the charge of the committee? And we kind of throw it out there and then really thinking about process. So maybe just tweaking some of our charges and thinking about, and this goes to then that motion. Like, so the, the motion for the Southside Fire Station says, under the direction of the Southside Fire Station Committee. So we don't necessarily have a building, police department, and you don't think you necessarily have to put that in and, you know.
I, I would rather not have it in or if we're having it in, have it go through the town administrator, having her be the authority. You know what I mean? And I think it might be opportunity to perhaps like regroup with the Southside Fire Station, depending on the, the vote of the, I mean, it might be opportunity to sort of.
So what do you mean by, so when you think about a school building committee?
I think they should be more advisory. I think in the charge, I, I think there should be more, I think there'd be more direction from town hall and from us than from the committee. I think there should be more of an advisory committee.
But they are also responsible for approving change orders, approving invoices.
Yeah, that, that, I, I would think that they would work coordination with the planning department, the building department as far as over, when the OPM with the project and how things go along. And I don't know, if we went as a select board, wouldn't be involved with that. Neither. But as I said, you know, with the draft, there's language in here that can be tweaked too. But as far as a standing building committee goes in the near future, there's a lot of work coming and that's, just have to see what that looks like.
And like you said, I think through that, this process, maybe perhaps we should be, get better at the charge.
I would like this part of a workshop format. I mean, because this is going to be a huge shift, as people say. You know, moving forward, you know, compared to the way we're doing things now. And I think it deserves that attention instead of talking about it tonight at 20 minutes at nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and so, because I personally think that this, that this is needed. This will, this will help the staff out immensely. But at the same time, I think by me, by us going through this process, I think it shows the need for a permanent facilities director. I know right now our assistant town administrator does that function and she does a great job of what she has. But I think with all these new projects coming on board, I think a facilities director that does nothing but this will make this more efficient and we can free up the assistant town administrator to do other things. You know, to take stuff off the town administrator's plate because he can only be doing so much and that's a lot of demands and a snap.
Yeah, the building department is growing and, and we need more inspectors. There's.
I would rather see more support at the town hall level.
Because I also think that Southside Fire Station Committee, they've been doing all this work for all these years and now they're getting to the finish line, you know, getting it to the ballot and stuff. And then all of a sudden afterwards, we're going to turf this back over, you know, to a permanent building committee? I just feel bad for all the work that the building committee's done in various iterations, you know, because we've changed charges, formats. You know, I would, I would like to see the Southside Fire Station Committee have a chance, you know, if they get approval at town meeting to finish this because it's, it's been part, it's been part of that committee's life in one iteration or another for the last, since 2019. And it's just, and to me, it's only fair. I mean, I, I understand, you know, I may be in the minority, but I was on that committee for years. And so I know, I know what these people, I know what these members did. I also know the hiccup that they had along the way as well. And, you know, now it seems like they're back doing things and I guess we'd like to see them finish what they started. You know, so if we are going to go with a permanent building committee, I would like to pull, I would like to pull out the Southside Fire Station and leave that on its own and anything going forward will be part of the building committee for that. It's just me. And I'm just defending the people I served with.
I think there's, you know, if we do put this in some kind of a workshop format, we can discuss everything.
Yeah, I think if a workshop goes a long way towards, we can have those high-level discussions and, you know.
So there's no hurry. I mean, there, there's really no hurry. The only thing is if we're going to put in the motion for the Southside Fire Station Committee that, that, or could be under the direction of the Southside Fire Station Committee, then that kind of puts it.
That can be still.
Puts a pin on it.
Right. I mean, and.
Why is it in there?
I, I didn't put it in there.
So that's the language that was used for the police station.
Yeah.
So it's the only, that was the last debt exclusion that the town did. And the, for the debt exclusion articles, it was specifically, the authority was specifically identified in the motion. So I'm not saying that you have to do that, but that is, that has been the practice in the past.
And I actually think, I actually think it's good because I think if you don't say that it's under that direction, then they don't really have any authority.
Yeah.
It's town meeting that gives them the authority. When you vote a school building, you had debt exclusion for a school building, it's under. It's under the, you know, under the direction of the school building committee. And that's, that's, you know, that's part of the motion, so.
I understand that. But I, I have concerns about the authority. I just, I, I, I don't know. I think it should go from select board to the town administrator to the building committee.
Well, the select board appoints the building committee.
I know, but I think the, the town administrator should, through the authority, through her oversight.
Yeah, but I think it says, it says.
Not to throw more on your plate.
I, I think you have to have clear, you have to know who has the authority. When push comes to shove, having cloudy authority is the worst thing you can do.
Right.
I mean, if you have like work, you have like warrants and invoices every month that you're approving for payment, not payment, you know, like when, and then you turn around and the committee appoint, you know, approves them and then they had, and then you all have to sign off on it. You know, make sure we have the funds in place and everything else. But I'm just thinking back to my days on the school building, you know, various school building committees and how we did it there.
But there, that's, there, there's a pretty specific authorities under the school building committee authority. But, so the Southside Fire Station Building Committee Charge of Membership four says, point four, once a project is authorized by town meeting and a debt exclusion vote if required, the building committee shall be responsible for the oversight of all work relating thereto, including site planning, preliminary architectural drawings, final plans, and the oversight of all construction and approval of all invoices. And six says, subject to the approval of the town administrator, utilize funding that has been previously appropriated by town meeting and the services of the organized project manager and architect that have been contracted under the previous town administrator appointed by the Southside Fire Station feasibility and design committee. So maybe we should look at this, everybody should look at the charge of the Southside Fire Station Committee and make sure that we're comfortable. And if, it, one of the reasons I wanna put this on, if we're gonna leave that committee as the one in charge of that project, then the motion can have them in there, but we can't have it in there if we're gonna change the authority, so. And I'm fine with that. I mean, I, I don't, you know. I do think though, that the concept of getting updates from the OPM in terms of what's budget, what's available, hasn't been part of their process. So they've approved invoices without saying we have the money to approve their invoices. So that budget update has to, and whether that's been from the town.
But number, numbers, I mean, number six, the, the previously allocated funds are not under the, under the authority. That's what number six means.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we good? And we, we're, right now, not doing anything.
Further discussion.
And then, but we'll have to, if there's votes at town meeting for police station roof and library OPM, we'll have to have discussions about either setting those up as new committees or as the experimental new municipal building committee, so that's fine.
That sounds like a good starting point.
Okay. Town administrator's report.
Just a couple of things tonight. So far for calendar year 2025, ISWOM has diverted seven point three tons of food waste from the landfill. Today, April first, begins the time of year restrictions for work on the beach due to shorebird colonies. The seaward work on the Sagamore Beach ramp is not yet complete and there are approximately three days of work still outstanding. The town has contacted Natural Heritage for permission to continue with the work, which abuts piping plover habitat. If we are granted approval by Natural Heritage to continue, we will complete the work utilizing a shorebird monitor. If we are not approved to use a monitor, the contractor will complete the work after the restriction ends on August thirty-first. Based on the digital equity plan, the select board has previously voted to prioritize extending the availability of public Wi-Fi. The deadline to formally apply for the digital equity implementation grant funds is July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I intend to submit a grant application to extend Wi-Fi infrastructure to the outdoor recreation space here at the community building to complement the investments that are being made to the recreation space. Over the past few years, the Shore and Harbor Committee and the DNR have been in contact with a neighborhood group in Falmouth organized around McGansett Harbor. Recently, residents have contacted both Bourne and Falmouth regarding possible support for a Seaport Economic Council grant application. I have shared this request with DNR and the Shore and Harbor Committee, and they have confirmed that we are contemplating pursuing these funds for town projects in the upcoming years. This may be an item that the select board wishes to discuss with the Shore and Harbor Committee at a future meeting prior to making any commitments of support. Finally, I have recently met with representatives of the Historical Society regarding the town's lease at the Archives Building. The select board may be receiving in the future a letter requesting changes to the terms and conditions of that agreement. Thank you.
Okay. A minute.
Motion to put a minutes at two twenty-five, twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Chairman's, uh, committee reports. See you until next time. Correspondents?
Correspondents, right. First, two thousand twenty-five. A, DEP letter, draft J-one range northern. B, DEP letter, draft small arms ranges two thousand twenty-four. C, DEP letter, fire training area one, lysimeter, myse, lysimimeter? Work plant?
Work plant?
Okay. D, Jay Peterson email regarding bridge rebuild. E, Talent Bank form McNamy for bylaw committee. F, Six Barwood Lane pier ramp infill permit. G, Cape and Vineyard Electric Corp strategic planning session invite. H, Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op FY twenty-four annual report. And I, Comcast forms two hundred and four hundred annual submission. Forgive any mispronunciations.
All right then. Next, future agenda items related to correspondence and other items for future agenda?
Um, two things. I know we've been, I know we've had two of the three male, one are licenses, a host community agreements issued. We still have the social equity one that we still need to talk about. I'm wondering if we could put that on the agenda for sometime in May after town meeting so we can, you know, just have an update on that and then determine if we wanna go out over, you know, in June for our social equity candidate.
MJ did mention that last meeting that we needed to do that, didn't you?
Isn't it on the schedule for June?
We had put it on the agenda for, uh, June third. But I can, you know, if there looks like there's an open agenda, we can maybe talk about it briefly in May, but I don't.
Okay, so that'd be good, yeah.
Yeah. I'm looking at maybe trying to do the legislative update on May thirteenth and maybe have the discussion with, well, Dylan Fernandez and David Viera there about the MBTA at that meeting too. So I'm trying to, I'm, I'm gonna try to see if I can get them for May thirteenth. And if not, maybe I'll do June third as an option, another option and flip-flop the HCA with the, so we can, between those two. So I'll, I, I'll start working with them on that. I think, uh, we have the, um, the town administrator's valuation is ready to be read for, on April eighth. The, I have some things that I'm gonna do April, between April eighth and April fifteenth with Sci-Tac Comcast. The Septic Betterment, there's, we need to sign a local approval for the Austin land. The Barlow's Landing intersection, we might wanna discuss. And, yeah, so we have a bunch of things going on, but I think we're in pretty good shape, so.
And also, yeah, the MS Bike-A-Fon, which is normally the last Saturday in June every year down at MS Maritime. I have not seen a route slip for that yet. I just wanna maybe see if we can get it on the agenda for, for the purposes of the, the pocket band, always get that done in, in, in advance so that way we don't forget it. You know, the normal thing that I bring up every year.
Right. And the other thing is, I did reach out to the, um, about the ride that was a problem last year and asked them if they'd started to talk to town hall about getting the road permission.
Yeah.
She thanked me for the reminder and I don't know if she's done that either, 'cause that's gonna come up pretty fast too.
And the, the last thing is, is on next meeting dates, we don't have the sewer commission meeting on our, on our next meeting dates and it's normally the last Tuesday in April. Is there any way we can try to meet as sewer commission earlier in the month or maybe with some of the select board meeting? So that way we can free up time after that, between that and town meeting?
I'll talk to Matt and see what's on the, what he's got going and then we'll figure that out.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Why, is it a problem? Meeting at the, not meeting at the usual time?
You know, the last, I know the last Tuesday, I have an, I have a commit, another elective commitment with the moderator of the, the water district, so I don't wanna be late, 'cause if that meeting goes, then I gotta come here afterwards. So I just wanna see if we can meet as sewer commission as another, or in the month. And I guess, you know, we, we're gonna be meeting a lot, so I guess wanna give us some rest time too between that and town meeting and everything else.
Well, I think we have no meeting during school vacation week. Maybe we could do it that week.
We don't.
Yeah. I mean, if everybody's gonna be around, it's, you know, maybe we'll switch it with that, but maybe Matt.
Yeah, I'll talk to Matt.
We'll figure it out.
Matt is not available school vacation week.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, he's not, yeah.
So maybe we'll do like a different time, a seven-thirty meeting, something instead of, yeah, so because those are pretty quick, or six-thirty.
Yeah, they're usually not long.
Yeah. Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
I get this one from Melissa, I get the last one to Gene. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstentions? Chairman's, thank you.